Good evening, I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire, emergency, and alarm will sound. Please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda?
Yes, under new business, we have a textbook adoption. Also, again, a recommendation from the textbook committee, and also approval for the newsletter of STICL. That's under Personnel 13.
Thank you. Consent agenda, can I have a motion for 1 through 7, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Communications, correspondence, start with the points of pride. And Savvy Raiders is a monthly student recognition program that celebrates the ideal qualities we strive for each day in our champions. Respectful, organized, confident, all-in, and prioritize self-care. Students are nominated by their teachers, and the monthly selections are made by our Student Leadership Subcommittee. Savvy Raiders honors one student at 6 through 8 and 9 through 12 in each of our departments. Art, Business, English, Health/Physical Education, Math, Music, Science, Social Studies, Spanish, and Technology CTE. Each student receives a Savvy Raider cinch bag along with info on who nominated them and why. In the high school, for English was Justin Sullivan. Music, Lauren Reynolds. Spanish, Madeline Brogan. Technology, Mackenzie Pore. Business, Olivia Amorys. Math, Madeline Offen. Science, Kayla Claver. Art, Jovi Barrett. Social Studies, Lorenzo Martel. And PE, Kalen Klein. In the middle school, the math Savvy Raider was Connor Rose. Music, Samuel Dietrich. CTE, Rowan Harris. Science, Haley Matthews. English, Alyssa Ellis. PE, Carter Wiley. Spanish, Kennedy Williams. Art, Alana Nichols. Social Studies, Miranda Potter.
And save the date for the elementary musical, How to Eat Like a Child. Friday, December 8th at 6:30, and Saturday on the 9th at 2:00. Thank you for our co-musical directors, Jody Perezzi and Aaron Hodge for making this opportunity possible for our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. Tickets are available this week. This week, this year's Dig Pink event hosted by the volleyball team raised $1,800 for the Side Out Foundation for Breast Cancer Research. Way to go Raiders! And Lily Fukas, the president of the Calumum Spectrum Club, was invited to speak in New York State Suicide Prevention Conference in Albany. Lily presented alongside experts in the field, using her voice to shed light on suicide prevention on the LGBTQ+ students. The room was filled with over 450 professionals across the state. Congratulations to Lily and her selection. Let's talk to her, pause.
The middle school and high school faculty has been busy connecting students with real-world learning opportunities by partnering with community organizations. We would like to thank the following community partners for investing in our Raiders. The Livingston County Chamber of Commerce, the Livingston, I'm sorry, the Education to Employment Division of the Chamber, Livingston County Probation, CASA of Livingston County, Hunt Engineers, Pizza Land, and Rochester Area Colleges.
The annual trunk or treat event was once again a great success. The event kicked off with a costume parade led by Mr. Rich Lookie and Mr. Booboo. Thank you to the parents and teachers who participated. Everyone went above and beyond decorating their trunks. Your time and creativity was appreciated by so many of the students. Congratulations to this year's National Honor Society inductees. The high school chapter inducted 15 new members during this year's ceremony. The National Honor Societies hosted our veterans on Thursday, the 9th, for breakfast. The Association was pleased to host over 80 veterans and their guests. We are grateful for the service, and that each veteran and guest allowed us the opportunity to show our gratitude.
On behalf of the elementary students and staff, we would like to say thank you to the Caladoni Fire Department and the Mumford Fire Department for bringing their equipment and trucks to the school and teaching about fire prevention.
We'd like to thank the Caladoni Rotary for their donation of dictionaries. Thank you to Chris Wood, Jay Ward, and Vicky Voorhever for their commitment to this program. To date, Caladoni Rotary has donated 1,107 dictionaries to our Raiders over the years. Congratulations to Damon Lindsay, this year's recipient of the Tom Callan Award. Damon exemplified the values that Tom Callan stood for, both on and off the field. And the Robert C. Freeman Award honors the legacy of a great teacher, principal, and coach. The award emphasizes the importance of citizenship. Congratulations to this year's recipient, Kalen Jake.
And I'll add that the senior play is this coming weekend, Friday and Saturday with a matinee. Do we have the athletic report, Mr. Wallace?
No, I do not have it.
And then we'll move on to guests of the board, our friends from Hunt Engineers to do the electric bus presentation.
Yeah, just before you begin Greg, one other bits of information. So this afternoon at 2:30, I received an email from U.S. News &amp; World Report. I think you guys are well aware, in August, our high school earned one of the best high schools in the country. This afternoon, our elementary won it, it was the second year in a row, and our middle school won it. So all three of your buildings now have won, the U.S. News &amp; World Report, one of the best schools in the country. So it was 103,000, little over 103,000 schools were reevaluated. So I'm very proud of our students and staff, and very thankful for the board and our teachers and staff and parents. They've created the right conditions for our children to learn and continue to excel. Yeah, so going back to the fall athletics, just a quick report, we had no code violations for the fall thus far, and our season is over. Participation passes again is when students are late or they have some sort of circumstance or situation in the morning. We had 18 participation passes used by 14 different players. In your report, in your bet packet or in your packet, you'll see the number of kids participating, each respective 14. And our scholar athlete honors will know here very, very shortly, our end of the marking period was on Friday, or Thursday, excuse me, we'll be submitting that information to New York State. Dual participation, we had five athletes attempted and five completed, so they played two different sports throughout the season. We had three varsity girls, soccer and cheer, one varsity cheer and JV volleyball, and one modified soccer varsity cheer. So very happy that the kids are participating as much as they can.
And now?
Yeah, Mr. Barr, Greg Barr. So the board had an interest, oh gosh, here last four or five months ago, about to learn a little bit more about the location of school buses and the changes in the laws. And so we invite engineers here, we have Greg Barr and Shannon Davis, and Greg will be presenting.
All right, Bob, what you doing now if it doesn't work? All right, if you would just page up for me when that gets done. So, thank you for having me. So I've given this now probably about 12 times, and it's changed every single time because of new information that's come out. First of all, about me, I'm Greg Barr, I'm the Vice President of Hunt Engineers. I've been there almost 30 years, and they like to throw things like this at me, right? Anything that's new, anything that we figured out, they like to throw at me. So next slide, please.
So this is not being controlled by anything on this computer?
It's the thumb drive that's in there.
Yeah, the computer's not...
So if you, did you down minimize it and pull it up?
The students are in the auditorium, we need somebody to tell us what to do with this.
Try the escape button.
Man, this is, I don't know how this is even...
Well, we'll have to have him come back.
Oh, now, now, the award is ready.
Okay, we'll leave it this way. It was working, trust me, Greg was here when we practiced, it worked. Okay, I'll be...
Be in your own room.
There you go. I gotta stand here. So, what's that? Yeah, okay, so pretty good agenda here. Just talk quickly about the law and the budget, and how this thing kind of unfolded unexpectedly on the state. A little step into basic compliance, what it really means for a district to not have them, to what they think about, to how you move through the process. A little introduction into what buses and what technology is there currently on the market. Talk a little about the limitations, what are the factors that limit these vehicles? Requirements for charging them, terms that you'll probably hear me say are state of charge, or SOC, depth of discharge, DOD, and 1C ratings and those kind of things. Those are actually discharge and charge rates that the batteries can actually do. Talk a little bit about the chargers. Right now, this is the wild, wild west, there's a ton of chargers on the market, they all kind of do things a little differently, but they are standardized, so we do have the ability to choose a lot of different manufacturers to get the same output. So things to consider, we'll maybe think about those from a deployment of fossil fuel buses that can be filled up really quickly and immediately turn back around and do the same thing versus an electric bus that has a charge period between the time of discharge and its batteries to be able to go back out and make another run. Life cycle cost, quickly, which is a lot, this is a big thing for people because the electric buses are significantly more expensive, so people want to know, you know, am I going to get the same value out of this more expensive bus than I will out of a gas bus? Total cost of ownership, I'll talk briefly about the NYSERTA document that came out, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read that. NYSERTA is spearheading all the technical information around electric buses, and one of their big articles is about total cost of ownership, and trying to show that it's about equal to total cost of ownership of diesel buses, whether you want to, I say drink Kool-Aid or not, you can choose that in your own mind. Funding opportunities out there, and then whatever questions that you guys might have. God, I love technology. There you go. So, the way this kind of unfolded is New York City passed 455A, which only applied to the city, and basically they established that all city buses were to be electric by 2035. And because New York State is responsible for that funding, our state decided that they would write the Assembly Bill, which adopted the way these would be funded, and the Senate Bill, the way these would be funded, but they didn't differentiate between New York City and the entire state, so it basically just says New York State. And when they did that, it adopted the 2035 deadline in that funding bill. So by basically putting that funding bill in place, it adopted the timeline that the New York City bill had. So that's sort of the background into the laws in which this has come about. Next slide, please. And so when you look at sort of this process, several things happened. Kathy Opal put a bunch of money in the budget, the budget was adopted, so essentially the wording within that budget was adopted. She applied to make sure NYSERTA was in charge of working out the details, if you will, which is why they're doing the steering documents. And then some additional things that happened, the $4.2 billion environmental bond vote that went through, had money in it for electric buses, and again, adopted that statement that's on the bottom left to require by 2027, no longer buying diesel or propane or any kind of fuel buses, they have to be electric in 2027, and the goal of 2035, having all buses on our roads to be electric at that point in time. While we're here, I'll just say there's been a lot of buzz about people wanting to change the end date, but not about changing the mandate. So if you think about that, there's a Senator right now in New York State that is basically asking for a moratorium on the 2035 date until we can see what's actually achievable. But that's yet to come, what's going to happen with that. So, this is put together, right when this whole thing happened, we sort of sat down and brainstormed what this really means for a school district, right? And the big thing for these buses is to know what they need to do, right? We know what they need to drive in the morning, we know what they need to drive in the afternoon, we know their total mileage, we know the roads that they drive on. So the first piece here is a route study, and I understand you guys have entered into OCY agreement to have your district route study done. What that route study will do is it will identify every single one of your bus runs, and what kind of battery size, and what kind of charge requirement is going to be needed for that particular run to happen. That leads us into a study of chargers. Remember I said there's a whole variety of different chargers, we'll cover that a little bit later. The infrastructure assessment, this is really, when we know what the buses need, and we know what the buses need to charge, then we know how much power we need from the utility grid, and only when we have those two pieces of information can we engage a utility company to say what's available out on the road, what's available for you to service the district. And if it's not there now, knowing we need this by 2035, what's your plan for getting it here? And it's NYSERTA's job to deal with utility companies to make sure that they're prepared for your load out on the street for the 2035 deadline. Then, after that, once we understand what we're going to have for total utility, then it's really the concept and the discussion of how fast do we go? How fast does the district want to go? How fast is the district capable of going? We have some districts that basically said, "I'm going to be last." And I know that's a sentiment across the state, and the problem is, is everybody's being last at this point in time. I know a couple districts that have been awarded buses, I don't know any that have actually purchased their own buses yet. So as we look at this 2027 date, it's coming relatively quickly. Once you get an idea of how you might deploy these, both physically and financially, then you have a bunch of infrastructure construction that you'll need to do, which is actually installing wire and power and chargers and all those wonderful things. And then after that, you get to order buses and wait 18 months for the bus to come in after you've ordered it. And that's current lead time, you'd expect that in 2027, probably you'd go off to two years because of the number of buses that would be bought in 2027. I'm going to stop right now, just dispel a myth about these buses. They're the exact same buses that you have right now that are a diesel platform, they just have, depending on the battery size, they may have an upsized axle capacity from 32,000 pounds to 34,000 pounds. The gross vehicle weight rating of the vehicle is unchanged. So if you have a bus out there now, it has a gross vehicle weight rating, that is significantly more than you would ever put on that bus, but that is what establishes the weight rating for that vehicle and what roads it can go on. So these electric buses are the things, a physical chassis, they've just been fitted with a battery bank underneath and the systems that manage the batteries under the front hood, which is slightly different. So, and then it's physically buying them, waiting for them to come in, and growing your infrastructure and chargers as you purchase additional buses. Next slide, please. I happen to have internationals in my bag, but it's very similar to this. The typical C bus that we're all used to, between Bluebird and Thomas, we're talking about roughly around 80 passengers. The key number there is if you look at the kilowatt hour rating of the batteries, they all have larger batteries available. So this is their base bus. And I'm going to pause for a second to basically say what I'm being told now is either no longer lithium-nickel-magnesium cobalt batteries, or lithium-ion phosphate batteries, which is an industry change, and I'll show you in the chemistry reason why that's been happening. Most electric vehicles that you know right now are the lithium-nickel-magnesium cobalt batteries. Considered extremely safe, those particular batteries. Next slide, please. What affects your bus range? This is, think about this just like your own vehicle. If I drive really fast and I brake really hard, even though they have regenerative braking, it's going to use more energy. If you gradually accelerate and gradually decelerate, it's going to preserve the energy. Topography really isn't significant anymore now that they've enhanced the regenerative braking, because the whole time you go up, you discharge the battery, the whole time you come down the hill and you're braking to keep the bus from going too fast, you're actually recharging the battery. So topography now is less of a concern than it was when this first started, and there's been real advancements in that. Cold weather affects the battery capability, so you'll get more mileage out of the vehicle when it's warm than when it's cold. And state of charge, SOC, which is how far the batteries are charged when you take them out on the road, and battery health. And battery health really is, these batteries are designed to be considered depleted when they have 80% of their original capacity. And that adds, that is at an eight-year warranty period for that battery, and we can talk a little bit more about the battery technology and that health of it. Any questions on this stuff? Because this is kind of like the meat to this.
I have 100 questions, but I'm only going to ask one.
Okay.
Excuse my negativity right off the bat.
Yep.
Because anything that you tell me is coming from Albany, I'm not buying it, not for a second. Question?
Yep.
So after eight years, if our battery in our bus is 79%, you're telling me that that battery is, A, no longer under warranty, and B, shot?
If it's truly at 80%, then the battery is considered needing to be replaced. So, let me, I have a piece in here that might help explain that a little better. Next slide, I think is actually the slide that I'm thinking of.
I mean, because my, what I'm getting at is, is the battery might be at 53%, and it might work just fine. So, who's going to tell us and tell Ron every five minutes, we've got to go out and get a new battery because it's at 71%?
Correct. So, I guess what I'm going to say in this particular chart is, we've all heard about the iPhones that catch on fire, and the Samsung that caught on fire, and all these other different battery technologies. That is not the two middle technologies. The two middle technologies that are there are actually the lithium phosphates on the left-hand side, the nickel-magnesium cobalt on the right-hand side, and the significance to those particular ones is LFP is actually the highest rated battery on safety, performance, and overall lifespan. And that's the reason that they switched to that particular battery. Lithium titanium, which is down in the bottom right-hand corner, the fantastic chemistry, the problem is it's huge. It's a really light battery pack, large volume, it won't fit on the buses. So that's, that's a technology that's out there that's in larger data pack storage systems for off-grid storage and that kind of stuff where you have basically shipping containers capable of doing battery storage. So, the two middle ones there are really the balance between performance, specific energy, energy density, safety, and overall lifespan. And that's the reason that these two particular, there are a couple other chemistries, but those two chemistries are the safest chemistries that have been generated on the market for lithium batteries. Next slide, please. Okay, so lithium-ion phosphate, I basically will take you down to about the middle of the page, it's thermal runway. This is what everyone's concerned about, is batteries catching on fire, okay? So a battery in lithium-ion phosphate is stable anytime it's below 270 degrees Celsius.
What's that in Fahrenheit?
Uh, 350 degrees.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's way up there. And then you can see obviously the lithium-nickel-magnesium cobalt battery is at 210C, still a very extreme temperature, but if you go above that to what I call life cycle, 2,000 cycles charging and discharge, and that is 2,000 cycles from being 100% fully charged to being depleted in one draw, down to 20% state of charge, okay? If you do a third of that, it's not a full cycle. So if you do a third of that, and that is your normal bus route, the number of cycles starts to grow astronomically. So what's being predicted here by the bus manufacturers and everybody else is unless you have an extremely difficult route, and that is a route that drives in the morning time and depletes its battery, and has to be charged again midday, and go back out in the afternoon, and again, depletes its battery, that battery is not going to meet its eight-year warranty period. So, they're talking about the idea of rotation, which I know for the transportation folks, they hate that idea because...
What do you mean by rotation? The actual buses or the batteries?
A bus does this route in its early life. It does this route as the battery ages, and it does this route as the battery gets close to its 80% mark.
Okay, thank you.
So your routes around your district, probably, and Bob and I talked quickly about how long the routes were, they probably will go out in the morning at 100% state of charge, come back midday, not need any charging, go back out in the afternoon, and come back and only be at a 50% depth of discharge. So you're not even, you're not even approaching the point at which that battery capacity is being used, because your routes are relatively short. And that's in comparison to some districts that I work with that have extremely large routes, where the bus goes out in the morning, and it can't even complete its morning run before the battery is dead. So those are the districts that are really struggling, the north country districts, the districts that have morning routes that are two and a half hours, and the battery comes back and it's at 25% state of charge, and you just can't charge it fast enough with all the buses to get it out for the afternoon.
So Buzz, that, take round's question is probably much more important than mine, please.
What is your calculation for overall mileage?
So, your route study will show that? What we're being, what...
What are you being told?
So, I deal with, I deal with three companies that do route. One company uses two and a half kilowatt per mile driven, and the base mileage is shown on the plan is at 1.5 kilowatt per mile driven, so we're actually adding an additional kilowatt per mile driven, and they're predicting those buses will do about 90 miles before they need to be charged. So if you think about what your bus routes are, I don't know total routes driven, how many you have over, say, 65?
So you're getting this information from an energy source versus the bus manufacturer?
This is the bus manufacturers company that does the route studies, and they basically will show you a typical charge and discharge cycle of a battery for every single one of the routes that it rides, and they'll be able to say at those rates, this is about the charge and discharge capacity required for that battery. And the second piece of that, which we can talk about when we get into the battery of this, the battery charging part of this, is it's all managed, it's all software managed. From the day you come up and plug into the bus, there's data ports that are on the bus that talk to the charger, that talk to the management software that says, "I'm here, I need to be here at this time in the morning," and it will charge the battery as slowly as it can to make sure that I'm not forcing a lot of energy into the battery, because the harder I discharge the battery, and the faster I push the energy into the battery, the more battery heats up, and that's what causes the life degradation of the battery. So they charge at what they call a C rating, and they discharge what they call a C rating, and that is their full capacity discharged in one hour. That's considered a C rate. If I charge that battery in one hour and I discharge it in one hour, that's a 1C discharge and a 1C charge rate. So what I showed you on the screen of 135 miles, that bus in standard driving conditions probably will get closer to 90 miles before it needs to be charged. But if you have a scenario where you're driving in the morning, it comes back, you plug it in, it can choose, depending on the way you set up the software, is to trickle charge that bus in the midday, so you're not charging at a real high rate capacity. I think we'll go to the next slide, because I think there's a little bit more here with the charger information. Battery health, okay, so 200, or 2,000 cycles for lithium-ion phosphate. What increases the number of cycles is that you don't take it to 20%, which is its full depth of discharge, you don't charge it at a C charging rate, which is... You don't charge it at a C charging rate, which is charging it with a rate that equals being charged in an hour, which we're not doing with buses, they're normally, the one battery chargers, almost eleven hours, the other battery chargers, almost three and a half hours. So that's a charge, a full charge. Discharge rate, you don't really have a choice of when people step on the pedal to make it go, it's gonna take the energy that needs to accelerate it. So that really is the one part of this that effectively changes the driving habits and how hard we push these buses to the battery life. So there will be some training that will be required for any of these buses on. You know, they will stand right up. These, just like an electric vehicle, these are fast. These are relatively fast and you gotta protect people from understanding that even though they will get up and move that fast, it's probably not great for them to make them do that. And this is really a lesson that will be learned by the drivers of vehicles. The big thing here is heat, right? Heat destroys the battery chemistry. These vehicles all have cooling systems that cool the battery compartments. Just like you have a cooling system in a diesel vehicle that keeps the engine cool, this has got a water source system that jackets the batteries that will keep the batteries closer to ambient temperatures opposed to like hot temperature. So there is cooling systems throughout the battery bank and that's built into the battery system. And so charge temperature here, one thing is, believe it or not, lithium doesn't like to move below freezing. And what they do when the vehicles are plugged in and they're cold is they actually will discharge some energy in the heaters in the battery to heat the cabin, to warm the battery up, and it only has to get to thirty-two degrees before you can start putting energy back into the battery. And once you start putting energy back into the battery, the battery will warm itself up. So these are all built in with thermal management in the battery compartment as well as the control system to make sure that you can't be charging the battery when it's bad for the battery to be charged. So there's a whole process here. And for people that would, one of the misses, they're not gonna work in the cold climates. They've been used for nine or ten years in Canada. So Bluebird's sister company is called Gerdian. Gerdian's one of the companies I deal with that do the energy studies. They are the Bluebird dealer in Canada that runs these buses in Canada, sells and runs the buses in Canada. So cold does not seem to be a problem for this, although there has to be systems in to protect the battery from cold conditions. And then obviously the battery age. If I have a battery that is four years old, there is natural chemistry degradation of the battery as the battery ages over time. So that's just a little bit about the lithium ion phosphate battery chemistry. Go ahead to the next slide.
Can I ask two quick questions before I forget, please, just based on this?
Yep.
You said the three and a half hours to charge the one bus and eleven hours to charge the other bus.
Yep.
So that means we have to hire people to come in in the middle of the night and switch chargers on?
We can, we'll get to the charger section.
That's fine, thank you. But before I forget also, the research I've done, I'm not a fan of this as you already can tell. I'm just trying to be brief and we'll move this right along. But I had never read anything about the bus, the battery charging again going downhill. That, I'm curious...
Regenerative braking is on most electrical vehicles.
So there's a way to charge the battery while you're out on your route?
Yes. Well, it's using the braking system on the vehicle wheels when you're slowing them down to slow them down with an electric generator that puts power back into the battery. So there is a whole regenerative braking system there, so...
So it's just from the braking process where this charging is?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Anytime you slow the vehicle down, you're putting that energy back into the vehicle. It's not a hundred percent.
No, okay, I just, thank you.
So when we talk about electrical infrastructure, most people really wanna know, how big of an electric service am I gonna need? This really depends on your total fleet, the routes that you drive and what the depletion is of the batteries for those particular routes, the depth of discharge, state of charge. And you'll see here that I wrote ninety-five percent and forty-five percent. When you have a bus that doesn't charge its battery fully to a hundred percent and doesn't discharge it below forty-five percent, the cycles for that particular battery will be in the thousands, ten thousand, twelve thousand cycles. That's not always possible with districts that have really long routes, but districts that have relatively short routes. This can be programmed into the controller to not necessarily take the bus to a hundred percent state of charge because it takes more energy to charge a battery to its last little bit than it does to get it to ninety-five percent. You can charge the battery to ninety-five percent relatively quickly. It's that last five percent, you really have to push the power to get into that battery because the voltages start to normalize in the battery. Again, mileage driven, type of charger that you need. And then the bigger thing here is your available time for charging, so that should be in your study. If you guys provided your start times and your return times and the mileage and the routes that were driven, that should all be within that to be able to tell us how big of an electric service you need at your bus garage to do your entire fleet. Next slide, please. Charging options. So level-two chargers, we would consider any passenger vehicle as a level-two charger. And they start at a couple kilowatts and go up to about nine kilowatts for a vehicle. The level-two chargers that are electrical, AC electrical, stop at nine-point-two KW. We are seeing a trend now with particularly international buses. They do not do AC charging to the bus, they only do DC charging to the bus. And their level-two charger that they are promoting for their vehicle is a DC charger and it's up to twenty-four KW. And those would be for routes that are really, you can have eleven hours to charge the battery, a couple hours midday, and then basically from the evening all the way to the morning. If your routes allow a level-two charger, that is gonna be the best for the battery life of your vehicle. If in fact you've got routes that need to go and be charged midday or need a rapid or quick recovery, the most common, and this is a little old now because there is a DC fast charger now out at thirty KW, sixty KW, ninety KW, and a hundred-and-twenty KW to the bus. And these are chargers that will put a full charge into the battery in three to four hours. And again, the management software here, there's an open protocol management software system in which a managing software system can talk to everybody's battery system, charger system, except there's one company out there that sort of locks their software down on their charger. And you probably would wanna be aware of that because they also have a licensing charge for their management software. Zectron and a couple other ones. It's open language, open programming, it can work with any of the different charger manufacturers that are out there. So that's really the options for charging. You've heard of like Tesla Supercharger? You can consider Tesla Supercharger to be like the level-three for the vehicles where they can take a full charge in about an hour and a half. So that's the technology that is out there right now currently on the market. Next slide, please. Factors in deployment, really it's funding capability. These are significantly more expensive than the buses that you currently buy. So how many you can buy in a year and how fast you can turn over your fleet. I think this is the biggest thing that districts are struggling with. A diesel bus is about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The electric buses are about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They're requiring you to, if you buy the bus, they're requiring you to keep it for twelve years. And they'll give you your aid back on that vehicle over twelve years. If you're leasing it, they allow you to lease it with a ten-year window. And then again, go back to the law, twenty-twenty-seven, you have to buy them. Twenty-thirty-five, you're supposed to be compliant, that's eight years from the time it's mandatory to the time you're supposed to be a hundred percent. There's rumors out there right now that there's discussions at some high levels about a two-year waiver. And this may be for districts that just physically have routes that are just so large that an electrical technology that we have now will not work for them. And then the last thing to add on here is insurance concerns. I've been in several calls with NYSERDA, Utica National, and NYSER. And you have an outdoor lot that you store your vehicles in. I have several districts that have full bus garages and they put these vehicles in the bus garage and they'll have to charge in the bus garage. And everybody's aware of what happens when a lithium battery actually does catch on fire. Very rare, very minor, but you can't stop them. That's the problem with this. So there's some concerns about charging vehicles indoors and then there's concerns about proximity of buses that are charging even outdoors. There's conversations about having insurance breaks if you have kind of a fire break, you have a space that you leave open between two buses. And this is yet to be figured out. I've been pushing NYSER and I've had NYSER pushed at NYSERDA and I've been going back and forth with them because I need to advise you guys what to do. And right now I don't have an answer for what the insurance is. They will be insuring them, they're insuring the New York City Transportation Electric Vehicle Location. And that's all indoors, all electric charging. So there's still a little bit to come on the insurance side of this. Next slide, please. Oh, you got it. All right, so the way this might actually look is if we look at where the power comes in from the street, you currently have underground conduit that comes around the building to the building transformer that's on the side of the building. Usually utility companies require those conduits to be at least four or five inches, which means that they can have a wire significantly larger than what's really needed. Without knowing what you have for a transformer, it could be a loop V transformer, which means primary can come in and go back out. Or it could actually just be a primary and only transformer which you would have to go to the wires before that transformer and do a loop T, high voltage loop T where you can feed that transformer. We like to put the electric service for the bus charging as close to the buses as possible. And the reason for that is the wiring is expensive and when you're transporting, I don't know what your street voltage is, probably thirteen-two, thirteen-two-hundred volts. You know, we're talking about four-eighty-three phase for the DC fast chargers or two-forty single-phase for the AC level-two chargers. So we like to keep them as close to the vehicles as possible because it reduces the cost of infrastructure for wire to go to the actual chargers. Chargers now come with a single head on a pedestal. They could have a single head or they could have two heads. So for a lot like this, we would probably put a single pedestal in that's twenty-five-foot cords that go to two different vehicles. And again, your drivers will come in, they'll park their bus, they'll grab the handle, they'll take it off the charger, they'll plug into the bus. At that point in time, that charger has no capacity and no power to it. It's being connected to the bus, mating to the bus. The software will talk to the bus and they'll say, this bus is plugged in and it has to charge tonight from eleven o'clock at night to three-thirty in the morning. Or that bus is a route that came in the middle of the day, it came in, we wanna top-off charge it from noon to two. And that's all software programmed based on the routes that it's driving. So concern about driver safety, grabbing the charger handle and putting it into the vehicle, that is not live until it makes to the software system and actually there's a timeframe in which it says I'm positively connected. If in fact that connection is disturbed, it will actually shut the charger off and the handle will no longer have power again. So that's sort of a safety feature of these. People are concerned about vehicle crashes. All these vehicles have quick safety disconnects for the battery capacity. So if there is a frontal collision, just like an airbag, there is a system in there that will physically disconnect the battery the second the front or the rear of the bus is engaged. They're installed between the frame rails of the vehicle, so side impact is not considered to be a problem and they're also cased in very heavy encasement under the vehicle. So, yes.
If and when that happens, are the buses totaled, just typically like the electric cars are now?
Um, if you have an accident that affects the battery compartment of the vehicle, I guarantee the frame is totaled, just like in any other normal vehicle crash. I mean, these are, I've seen some vehicle crashes, bus crashes that you look at the vehicle and you see the frame is tweaked and bent or the front of the vehicle is sort of pushed off to the side. I mean, that pretty much is anytime you do that to a vehicle, it's gonna be totaled. But it would take a significant accident to damage the battery compartment of this vehicle and I would be more concerned with the safety of the children on the bus than if in fact that battery compartment got damaged. Real heavy, thick wall battery containment protection for it under the vehicle. It's just like a skid plate on a vehicle, that's the underside of it so you can't really pick something up on the road and hit the bottom of the battery pack and figure it's gonna penetrate it. Very, I mean, I would encourage Ford, if you get a chance to see one of these vehicles, to actually look at the vehicle, look at the battery bank and look at where it is. I think I sent you the location of who just got theirs. Yeah. And it was at the school boards.
How many did they get?
They got a free one.
They got a FEMA bus, yeah, they got a FEMA grant bus. And a charger. So that's basically the way we would deploy electric on the site and the idea is you put the conduit and everything in the ground and then you just put a bus in and throw the charger you had. Comes off with a charger switch here, you basically would add chargers as you purchase vehicles. So it's not all one big investment.
So that one charger can only charge two buses?
It can charge two buses, that's correct. So if you buy four buses, we buy two chargers, we come off and switch gear, we pull the wire in, because you can't run wire and leave it connected in the panel and leave it wired off in the ground. It can't physically run into an electric panel unless it's terminated and it can't be left in a junction box underground unless it's terminated. So you put the conduit in place and then when it's time to connect the charger, you pull the wire and you terminate the panel and you terminate the charger.
What if we have somebody come in in the middle of the night and we just buy one charger for four buses, everyone? I'm dead serious.
Say that one more time.
We hire someone to come in in the middle of the night. We're not gonna buy one charger for every two buses. We'll buy, say, one charger for every five buses. And then we'll come in and we'll charge them at all different kinds.
I encourage, Bob, I encourage you to get that NYSERDA document. There is a really good article and discussion in there about the cost of labor to do those kinds of things versus the cost of one of these chargers. A level-two charger might be seventy-five hundred dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Might be fourteen thousand dollars for a pair of them.
Conversation's over, I apologize, no, I...
DC fast chargers can be thirty, forty thousand dollars. There's a significance there.
I was thinking, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. Funding, so there's a couple things that are left off of this. One is the Inflation Reduction Act, which will pay incrementally the difference between an electric vehicle and a gas-fired or diesel-fired vehicle. And they'll incrementally pay towards the difference of that with a maximum of forty thousand dollars. So forty thousand dollars of the vehicle cost, because the incremental cost is two-hundred-and-some thousand dollars. The federal truck voucher program also has line item in there per vehicle purchased. So those are two federal programs that are there. Aided over twelve years, just like any other bus purchase. It used to be five years for a diesel vehicle or propane vehicle, now it's twelve years. NYSERDA had rebates out for chargers. So if you buy a NYSERDA-approved charger, there's rebates on the chargers. Cost of construction, anything you do on the site that is for transportation is reimbursed at your transportation aid, which is also being challenged right now because some people's transportation aid is significantly less than their building aid. And other districts, it really, it isn't much different.
Ours is about ten, eleven percent.
Eight to ten.
Yeah. So there is a little bit different there. What they reimburse for fuel is just like if you were buying fuel for the vehicle, you're buying electricity for the vehicle. The management software basically records how much power went into the vehicle and when it went into the vehicle and what vehicle it went into. So that's all kept in the software management program. As I mentioned, a ten-year lease option. So the law, I believe it's both the Senate and the House law passed in New York State, has got a one-time grant per bus of twenty percent for districts that are aided over sixty percent. So twenty percent of the initial purchase price of the vehicle is being provided by the state and that's good... and that's good to 2030. It went from 2022 to 2030. Not many people have taken advantage of that. So I think probably what will happen is that grant timeline will actually get extended because people will in 2027 obviously start buying buses. So that's the, that's the grant timeline. And then obviously FEMA in 2023 for New York State, about $5 million per buses. And that's an application process and people have been awarded buses and chargers. And we've done a couple installations of the chargers. I will mention the caveat here is they're giving you a base electric bus. That base electric bus is not outfitted for New York State DOT requirements, the stop sign, the crossbar, all those different things. So if you're awarded a bus, you have to pay those additional things that have those things added to the bus, which has been a surprise for people like Gates and a few other people that have been awarded these buses. There are a couple of North Country districts that basically said, no, thank you, you can take your grant and we'll just wait for this whole thing to go away. I can tell you, I'm not in agreement with this process. I don't think it's properly thought out. I don't think it's properly, but I've been on some calls with NYSERDA and a few other people, and I can tell you this is not going away. And this, this is one of these things that is just going to keep coming, keep coming, keep coming along with all the other mandates that are coming in terms of in-house gas appliances, new construction, not allowing to have gas services brought to them. And we're seeing that as a growing trend across New York State and a lot of municipalities. That's all. Other factors, so I've been told by NYSERDA and a few other people, let's not worry about field trips and let's not worry about sporting events and let's not worry about all of those ancillary bus and vehicle uses. There will be guidance for those as this gets closer to the deadline, when you actually have to have those vehicles. Most people are going to keep a fossil fuel vehicle for those purposes, probably right up until the 2035 date, until there's other ways around those particular things. So we shouldn't be worried about those. The ones that really concern me are, oh, I lost power today and I wasn't expecting to lose power and I called the utility company and said my power will be back on in six hours. You have holding time, you need to get kids back home. You have scheduled half days. How are we going to deal with scheduled half days if I have a vehicle that can't drive the morning route and the afternoon route without charging? So these are all things that we have to consider when we see this route study that's done, the charger study that's done. And then, you know, the emergency dismissal is a big one. We all can't predict and we've all had to send kids home from school without thinking about it ahead of time. I think we can work around things like your half days and those things, you could plan those, but you can't plan the two emergencies and the early dismissals that are out of your control. So those are things that I think you're going to want to think about as you look at the route study and say, okay, how many vehicles will I have that can do afternoon routes after they complete the morning route? And you may be a district, based on your geography, that can, will have still 75% of your buses available for the afternoon route. And you may just have to push a couple buses. There's, also talk about allowing districts to maintain beyond 2035 other vehicles, which have not been granted yet. There's also talk about a new vehicle that's on the market right now that is a clean zero discharge diesel vehicle. So we'll have to wait to see what happens with that technology. When I was talking to, I believe it was Dan Lim from SED, and he told me that right now, one of the manufacturers is working on a battery for the vehicles that can get 315 miles. So that technology is going to continue to grow. And so when you have routes that are extremely long, I'm going to suggest that those are the last routes that you deploy because technology, the battery life is going to catch up to, to that process. I think that's it. Any questions? Oh, here, this is not mine. I will not take responsibility for this, but this is the basis justification of why New York State and the West Coast is really looking at this is they have done a calculation based on, on vehicles and hazard effects to global warming and greenhouse emissions. And it would take a diesel vehicle that can get 37.3 miles per gallon to make that diesel vehicle equal to the environmental impacts of manufacturing electric buses. And so that's why New York State has looked at this and said, New York State, Northeast, West Coast, you know, you get off of the flatlands in the middle of the country and you really don't have a lot of, you got a lot of agriculture and a lot of things that, that are helping with greenhouse reduction. So this is not mine, this is just why this is being done. And I'm pretty sure the next one's questions. Yep. Fire away.
I have one last question. First of all, thank you both. Your governor, as you say.
Well, I mean, correct you, she's not my governor. She's our governor and some of us didn't put her there. We just.
Early on, early, early on, you were talking about how she, she has all this money that they, they, they stuck towards it and all, all this stuff. Is it going to be like going to, um, go and have a kidney replaced and you got really good surgery, you know, and the bill says $8 million, but you only paid $4.10? Is it going to be, is that, is that what she's telling us?
Yeah, so what's, what's, what's happening right now is most people are looking at this, this sticker shock, if you will, for these electric vehicles. $450,000 for $150,000. And there's all the money that's outlined to federally to try to make the difference more palatable for folks that have to vote on buying vehicles. Again, NYSERDA document is really good because they outline all of these different values and they talk about total cost of ownership, that a diesel bus that you replace every five years. And I don't know what your cycle is.
13 years.
13 years.
You're, you're a lot different than a lot of districts. We have a lot of districts that just roll them over, trade them in, roll them over, trade them in, roll them over. That the maintenance on the electric vehicle is less, there's a prediction of how much less, they give a range. There's the grant money, the funding money that's available and everything else. And there really is a, a topic in there about total cost of ownership in 2027 should be very similar for school districts, whether it's a diesel bus that they're buying or an electric bus that they're buying.
So you're saying it.
And I'm, I'm not saying it, I'm saying if you choose to drink the Kool-Aid that they have in that steering document, that's what that document states. I think it's going to take a lot more technology to enhance battery capacity for that really to be true. If people have to replace the batteries after eight years, but they're forced to keep the bus for four years or 12 years, that's going to be a problem for some districts. Again, it's, I, I'm just here to advise people, I'm not here to tell you, you should, you should go green. I'm just telling you that I don't think this is going to stop until we can, until enough people do it and prove that it doesn't work.
Yeah.
So.
So should we not be those people to prove that it doesn't work?
Well, I can tell you, per my conversation with Bob, I think your routes are pretty short compared to, I mean, take a district that's nearby at Ray Letchworth. How big is Letchworth's routes that they drive, you know, out in the middle of nowhere? North Country, the North Country up in the Tuck Hill Plateau, there's, I talked to one school that's driven morning routes, 112 miles. Right, it's, you know, kids get picked up in the bus at 5:15 in the morning and get to school at 7:45. These are, these are places where this is going to be completely impossible. Works great in East Coast because they don't go outside of their city limits, right? It works great in New York City because they're an inner city district. It works great in Buffalo and Rochester and some of these places that have all inner city routes. But we don't know until you look at your mileage driven by day, the bus manufacturers and the charger people that do these studies and do these chargers, should and will be able to predict the life of the battery, how, how far it will go on their routes. And I'm saying, from my point of view, if you can make half your fleet work with level two AC chargers, man, that's the first half of the fleet that you should be buying with standard batteries. They're the least expensive charger, the least expensive battery technology, they're a proven battery technology and they, you don't have the increased cost of the larger battery pack and you don't have the increased cost of the larger charger. And if you did that, you would be able to then test several routes that you think are maybe close, right? If you have, half your routes are, are great, they only have to charge at nighttime, you've got a couple of the routes that you think this really isn't going to make it, but you might be able to take it out in the morning on that route and bring it back and actually see how much the battery was used in that particular route. So the idea here is we're going to have to get in and test these vehicles to see what they can do once the mandate comes in place. So it's.
Can you comment about the grid capacity, like especially, how do we know if we have capacity at the roof?
So there are really good resources for that, but the problem comes in that it might tell me there's a five meg circuit out in front of the street, but it doesn't tell me what the current load is on that five meg circuit. I, I, I looked at your district and said, okay, if I had 16 buses or, how many, how many regular routes do you have?
15.
15 routes. Camp El Silona, I think, has 15 routes. Camp El Silona with a managed system only needed a 500 KW service. A 500 KW service is just like another manufacturer building built on the road. When I talk about Myra Schools and Horsed School, they have 115 buses and 112 buses. They need a new substation somewhere in the city of Almira to support those two districts. So it, it, once we know and we see this route study, that's the, that's the next step.
Jeremy, we've had several meetings with companies that want to try to assist with grant writing and so forth. Right now, there's enough power right in our substation right here, but does it mean in five years when we go, maybe to click into it, that power's not being sent down the road to Avon or Canada Eagle for that matter? Right now, there's enough power to take care of our buses.
It seems like our district is at a big advantage. We're right on the 34,000 line. We have short runs, the topography, I mean, it's not of significant variance with hills with the regenerative braking. But it seems like, for all that you've presented, I was certainly skeptical before your presentation, it seems like our district would actually be, dare I say, a decent fit for this technology. I'm surprised to say that, but.
I agree with you, Mike. I felt the same way prior to this.
One concern I have though is i- in the terms of power failure, you know, would we need to consider a different capacity generator in a capital project moving forward if we do go to this?
The answer is yes. And also too, that we will actually, Craig and I were talking about this, once we have the capacity, we'll be selling the energy back to the grid. So I did bring that up. We got to talk about that. Possibly, possibly. That's a separate, that's a separate vehicle charger. That vehicle charger looks just like a solar storage system where the power can come in and charge the batteries, but if the grid goes down, or the grid is struggling, that power from the batteries could then be put back through the charger and back onto the grid and it's called vehicle to grid. And that's a pipe dream for a lot of politicians in inner city areas that once everything becomes electric vehicles, I will no longer have the power generation brownout problem because when that happens, I can get those vehicles to basically repower and make the difference up on the grid. Why would you not want to do that? I would say you don't want to do that because that's part of the charge and discharge cycle of your batteries. You're in the transportation business to get kids to and from school, you're not in the power business to basically sell power. Big in cities, I don't think it's huge here, but maybe for the next person that's in my position, when I'm retired and long gone, maybe vehicle to grid will be something we'd want to consider, but it's not right now.
Anything else?
Yes, um, do you take in account the BOSI's trips, uh, the BOSI's run, I should say?
How about special ed?
In special ed?
Special ed will blow this thing up. Yeah, so I mean, those are the things that when you see your normal routes, you're going to have.
And those ones are no worry.
Right, you're going to, you're going to have to look.
But when you're committed to replacing the whole fleet, it's ridiculous.
Well, again, I'm not here to tell you.
Bus manufacturers can't even supply the amount of demand that all these schools are going to need to replace their fleet. They'll tell you that personally.
Right. So. And I think that's what's going to end up, that's what's going to end up delaying the 2035 date. I don't think that's going to delay the 2027.
I got one more question. Along the lines sort of, so our fire trucks fill up here too. They use our fuel, we share, right? So have you heard anything about fire trucks? Will they have to be replaced? And if so, are we supposed to?
Yeah, you know.
Provide more plugs for the fire trucks?
A lot of things, a lot of things come about. You're going to keep your fuel island long until your last bus is, needs to be fueled and you have an all electric fleet. At that point, I don't know what's coming for first responders. I don't know what's coming for, uh, they're making, they're making electric bulldozers and they're making electric tractor trailers, they're making, these, these things are all being sort of made in that direction. I've got a fire chief that's on my staff, Assistant Chief, Don Flattner, he's like, yeah, there's no way I'm ever going to, we're ever going to not have that. Cause they, they diesel pumps on the vehicles, right? They run their fire vehicles, they run their fire pumps to fight fires and do all those different things. I think it's going to be a long time before first responders and emergency type vehicles get affected. But I do think there will be concessions made for school districts once we prove some of this stuff is not possible. If the technology doesn't keep up, that there will be needs for fossil fuel vehicles. So that's yet to come.
Thank you so much, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Oh, yeah. Hope I don't need more to your, you know.
Does your car need to be charged?
No. No, I have a, I have a Volkswagen that gets 30,000 miles per gallon.
There you go.
Have you driven a Tesla yet?
I haven't. Nor will I.
Brain break, you guys?
Yes. Bob, if you have a question, you can just let me know.
I will.
And we'll do our best to answer them.
Very good. Thanks so much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Good night.
What are we doing, Ian, over there? Pressure's on, sir.
I can do this completely without a PowerPoint.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't need that thing.
You have it too on your screen.
Yeah, we do have it on our.
Yeah, you have it.
Yep.
Oh, here we go. Well, we'll make it happen. Oh, there it is. Thank you, Ian. Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Mark.
All right, so welcome. Take a breath, that was a lot of information to take in. Now we're going to switch gears to junior achievement. So I wanted to take a few moments, I'll introduce Angela in just a moment, but we're going to be welcoming back junior achievement program here at the elementary building, K5. For those of you that don't know about junior achievement, we're going to go into depth about the program in a moment, but the brief overview is that it's a program that focuses on financial literacy, work and career readiness, as well as entrepreneurship. So we'll be bringing in those lessons and that experience for our K5 students. CalMom, actually, the elementary school has been participating in junior achievement since, what I found, since 2009. So I had a whole folder of all things that we've participated in since 2009, with a break in service, of course, when COVID hit. And what the junior achievement program did is they took COVID, that opportunity, that break where we weren't allowing people into our schools and volunteers into our schools to revamp and rejuvenate the program. So we'll take you through how we're going to implement the program. Junior achievement has a lot of facets to it, but we're going to talk about what we're going to do here at CalMom. And Angela Grels is who I'm going to introduce to you is going to help us talk through some junior achievement details. So Angela is the Director of Education to Employment with Livingston County Area Chamber. Her office contracts annually with the Livingston County School Districts under the GV BOSI's, Genesee Valley BOSI's umbrella to provide programming for students in kindergarten the world of work, and to connect students and educators with a gamut of programs, some that you may have heard we do here in the high school with Dr. Chanel. We have Lunch and Learns, Career Days, which generally we have in our grade five, you'll see how we're switching that up, still holding Career Days, Pathful Connect, Glow With Your Hand events, which we just had, Junior Achievement, which we're gonna talk about this evening, and many more. Angela's background includes 12 years of service on the Livonia Town Board, extensive experience in hospitality, including business ownership, and time in education, as well as nonprofit work. So I'm gonna welcome Angela to stand by me here as we take you through Junior Achievement in detail, overview of how we're going to implement it, K-5 in our building.
Not too much detail. Some detail. We're gonna give you just an overview. I think you have to be on a little bit of overload, I feel like I need recharging. So, as Michelle mentioned, and thank you for the introduction, Michelle, Junior Achievement has been for around, actually, for a long time, 1919 Junior Achievement was founded by the then-president of AT&amp;T, the Stratmore Paper Company, and Senator Murray Crane from Massachusetts. And they founded this nonprofit entity because they believed, and shockingly, we still hear it today, that students need to be better prepared for the world of work in terms of their financial literacy, their work readiness skills, and entrepreneurship. And entrepreneurship, that's changed a lot over the years. Really, when you think about people who are entrepreneurial, what are the characteristics that they possess? They are leaders, they are people who believe in developing solid teams, they're people who are good critical thinkers and problem solvers, what you are raising, hopefully, all of your readers to be, right? So, as we look at Junior Achievement, how does that programming take place? The core of the Junior Achievement principle of delivery is really inspiration, connecting outside career professionals with students and educators, using fun and creative ways at age-appropriate levels to build these characteristics for students. They have turnkey lessons, so the way that Junior Achievement works in our region, Junior Achievement works through our office, Education to Employment at the Chamber. We then share those opportunities with our school districts. We train from the Chamber volunteers who will come into your classrooms and present these lessons. We'll talk about volunteers in just a minute. So, at the elementary lessons, and I apologize, there's a typo, it should be grade four, we're working with kids in kindergarten, right? You're not gonna come in and say, okay, so today we're gonna talk about financial literacy and entrepreneurship. No. You're gonna talk to them about making choices, saving money versus maybe giving money away, the value of work. Then in grade one, you're gonna talk about needs versus wants, what are things that you have to have, what are things that you'd like to have, and how does having a business or having a job, like, within your family, maybe you have a certain responsibility on Saturday mornings. My youngest daughter, her favorite job in the family was cleaning the toilets after Saturday morning. I don't know why, maybe it was just standing there doing this, but if we were out, she'd cry if we weren't home in time for her to do, she's like, so what's gonna take my toilet job? I'm like, no, it's okay. So we talk to kids in that way, you know, ways that are relatable for them. In grade two, they're starting to think about a community, right, as we build out in their ability to perceive the world around them. The money decisions that people make, how money moves through a community, there's a cute little game about how a quarter moves from this business to that business to the next business, although nowadays, I don't think a quarter might get you all that far. In grade three, we're talking about how people make money and how the economy functions within a city or a larger area. Grade four, there's a hot dog stand game that kids play, and they're becoming business owners and talking about buying goods and then having to sell those goods and setting a price for them. These programs, grades K through four, are all comprised of five lessons each. Junior Achievement provides a kit with all the materials, we train the volunteers, they're vetted for safety through Junior Achievement, and then they come in, meet with your teachers at grade levels, and sit down and say, okay, your grade level is looking for delivery in January, let's pull out a calendar, what, when would you like that delivered, what are some of the buzzwords that you use in your classrooms? How do you get kids to pay attention? How do you settle them back down and refocus them? So that I'm using the same kind of language that your educators are using. That's great. Let's talk about those lesson deliveries for those four-grade levels, five-grade levels right now, that's 15 lessons. We've already stacked 10 of the 15 classrooms for spring semester with volunteers. I've already got volunteers on board. Michelle was great, we sent it out district-wide, put it on your social media, we promoted it through the Chamber, and then I'm really excited to share with you a partnership with Dr. Chanel and the high school in just a minute, and we are also sharing this opportunity with SUNY Geneseo students who are working in, in, in the education program and wanna get into high schools and get to practice their craft a little bit before they get out the door. So, we'll have students teaching students, we'll have professionals teaching students, and then we're gonna bring some high school heroes on board. And that's a great opportunity for Raiders on both ends of the grade level spectrum because high school students can be trained, learn these skills of communication, lesson delivery, planning, organization, mentorship, and leadership. And a partnership of two high school students can go down and teach a lesson in kindergarten. What a great way to establish a good relationship between your buildings. And give your high school kids community service hours and leadership training, all in one program. So really excited about that.
And Angela, I'll say that, as a classroom teacher, when I was teaching third grade, I had, I had Junior Achievement in my classroom and welcomed a volunteer in, and once he learned the system, he actually requested to be in my classroom every year. We had our own, you know, relationship that he wanted to come into the school, wanted to come into our classroom and deliver those lessons for many years. He was one of the CEOs of OXPO. So, not only did they take the lessons that they're, you know, generated for them, but then put their own flair, especially once the volunteers become comfortable in front of kids and they get the training, they start to put their own flair on it, start talking about the business that they run, that they're part of, and we can even have some extension lessons, and if they really enjoy it, offer them to come in and do some other work, too. It just, it really builds an awesome partnership.
It's exciting, and actually, I think two or three of the volunteers that we already have registered are not only community members, but they're former CalMom students, and two of them specifically said, oh my gosh, I loved Junior Achievement when I was at CalMom, I am so excited to come back and be able to teach it now as an adult out in the world of work. So, super exciting. Delivery methods for these programs, as I mentioned, those lessons are five sequential lessons in grades K through four. They can be delivered, we're using the volunteer-led method, they can be educator-led, or they can be students self-guided. We like the idea of bringing career professionals in, specifically because of what Michelle said, that ability to bring their own work experience into the classroom and share it with students. Capstone programs. So the fifth grade has an unbelievable opportunity this year. They are going to participate in a program called JA BizTown, which is age-appropriate for kids in grades like four through six, but five is really the sweet spot. Those students, and we'll talk about the lesson delivery for them in a minute, are going to have classroom-led sessions delivered by one of your educators, and after 13 lessons, they are going to take a field trip up to the brand-new JA Discovery Center, which is opening in early 2024. And if you have ever been to Strong Museum, to the Whitemans in there, hopefully you've taken Tylenol before you go because it is very busy, but you go in and you work with a Whitemans on steroids, if you will. So some of the companies that we have participating in the program, MVP Healthcare, Ladestry, Paychecks, Kodak, American Packaging. So students are gonna go in, they're gonna work for these companies, they're gonna earn a paycheck, they're gonna have to cash the paycheck and spend it. It's a great way to provide the hands-on learning for those classroom lessons. So a very exciting capstone project. And then JA Finance Park is available at middle and high school levels, that's something that we can talk about down the road. The Discovery Center that opens this year, you will all receive an invitation to the opening. We'd love to have you come up and walk through what the simulation looks like and feels like. There will be actual employees there running those centers from Ladestry, Kodak, St. John Fisher has a storefront, MCC has a storefront. So as we talk about the units within JA BizTown, and Michelle, you jump in, any time, I'm gonna keep running.
Okay. Well, you had mentioned, so BizTown is not going to be, uh, those lessons are not gonna be delivered by volunteer. Actually, Mr. Leonard is going to take that on as part of his curriculum for social studies and science. One of the great things from departmentalizing with grade five is we have one dedicated teacher, this fits into his curriculum. So he's actually gonna be trained at the end of January, uh, he's gonna go up to Rochester, he's gonna experience BizTown, but also have the curriculum laid out for him and go through those 13 sessions with our kids, and then he'll be able to lead the group into that capstone experience later. So, they're gonna do the financial literacy, community and economy, work and career readiness, business management, and then finally go to the simulation, which looks like a plaza, and they're gonna all have an opportunity. There's a great YouTube video, if you just Google it, because aren't we the first in this area to be able to, to, to go?
You are. You are the first district in Livingston County that's been...
See? It's gonna be great. Yes, so it's gonna be awesome. And then, um, what they get to do is they get to be employees, but also consumers. So, they're gonna earn a paycheck, they, they're gonna apply for a job, they're gonna be able to see what opportunities are there, and they're gonna spend the whole day doing this, and then reverse roles. So, they get a little bit, they'll get both sides of it, and they get to start picking. So, uh, as the lead-up, so this is where we used to have Career Day, was in grade five, so we're gonna move Career Day, actually, to grade four, to start bringing in our local business people to start showing the possibilities of what they can do, give them some background knowledge, so that when they get to the BizTown experience, they start to have, you know what, I'd love to look into banking, I'd love to look into this commerce, or retail, or whatever. So, they'll have a little bit of experience before going straight into BizTown. So, Career Day, which was traditionally in grade five, will appear in grade four, so we'll be soliciting for those opportunities, and it'll happen in May of this year as well, and then BizTown will be in May, correct, for a brief?
Another reason that we talked about that being a good swap with Career Day is that it is much more comfortable for students to engage with outside professionals first in the safety of their own space. To take those fifth graders cold, not having had that experience, right up to a place where they don't know, to engage with adults that they don't know, sometimes that's a little bit off-putting. So we thought that a great feeder concept was to bring outsiders in, in fourth grade, and then in fifth grade, we're taking those students out. And don't feel that we have slighted you, I wanna make sure, Bob, I'll send Bob an email and he can share with all of you, if you would like to volunteer in a classroom as a JA professional, we'd love to have you. So I will make sure that I send that along.
I already gave it to you.
That's, we already solicited.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Just waiting on reply.
We're just waiting on, you know, we do have some room to fill.
Tuesday for one month. Yep, how many spots to fill?
We have five more spots, I think?
Yeah, we do have five more spots.
12 hours of your time is all it takes, 12 hours of your time.
I'm really sad because this wonderful woman reached out today and she's like, I would like to teach this grade level in this month. I gave them all but the timeframes, the specific grade levels we're requesting, and I said to Michelle, I can't give all these to her, I need to save some classes for high school heroes, and I need to save some classes for the college kids. So, it's a great problem to have, to have too many volunteers, right? I'm not gonna read through these things, you can read through them, they're in your packet. Just when students have the opportunity to have these classroom lessons followed by hands-on experience, they, their belief in their ability to control their own future and make decisions about where they wanna go and how they wanna get there improves tremendously. I loved one of the comments that one of the kids had after coming home from the Discovery Center in Atlanta, he said, wow, now I know why my parents are so tired every night. I'm like, yes, you should, know that. So this was what Michelle was talking about, Kyle Leonard is going to be able to share with your kids, what's, and with your, with your other fifth-grade teachers, what's the purpose of JA BizTown, and how to effectively use this curriculum and prepare our kids for a successful visit. I'm not gonna tell you about this stuff. We've pretty much already told you the student goals, right? It's improved financial literacy, understanding how to be a citizen in your community, and the soft skills necessary for the world of work. I'm not gonna tell you about the program components or the curriculum materials, that's minutia that you don't need. What I liked here, this, I think, is important, and it shows you the adaptability of JA curriculum. So you have 13 teacher-led lessons, and Kyle's gonna be presenting those, but these lessons are flexible in that maybe with whatever curriculum we are teaching over the next two or three months in fifth grade, it works best for me to put financial literacy first, or maybe I wanna put it third and roll citizenship up to first, depending on what else we're teaching. So that's the nice part of adaptability and alignment with what you're already doing, and how that JA program flows through the curriculum work that you already have planned. So that's it. I don't have any information about chargers, batteries, unfunded mandates, any of those things. I can answer a lot of questions about that from my time on the town board, if you have them, but I'd be happy to answer any JA questions you have or programming questions, if you have any.
We do have the two training dates set, those were posted, so if you're looking to volunteer and you're hoping that you'll be trained to, um, on the 28th of November, right after school, 3:15 to 4:15. We also have National Honor Society that we partnered with to provide childcare during that time, so if you have to bring a student with you, a little one, we'll have that. And then also the following day from, uh, 6:00 to 7:00 on the 29th, all, both in the elementary building, so there's still time to sign up.
I like the revamp. I mean, I, I only sort of remember what it was before. I didn't participate, I had friends that did, and I almost got dragged into it, but...
You almost voluntold? Yes.
Serious saying.
Mr. Richter, you'd be great. Um, yeah, they, they've really done a great job. I have to say, when I first came to the JA table about five or six years ago, it was good, and they hit the pillars, and they accomplished the work that needed to be done, but it is now, feels like it's much more 21st, 22nd century, you know, and they've just, they took that COVID time to really revamp and retool.
Beyond, like, map skills, I remember putting up the map and seeing the community stations, and it felt like that type of lesson, these feel more, um, real, yes, more real world, more real experiences, so...
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just lots of volunteer signups coming our way. Feel it.
Thank you, Angela. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you for the most information. You know what, it was fascinating.
It was. Mrs. Moose, just to be sure, do we have anybody signed up? We do not have public forum signed up tonight. Mr. Malasani Superintendent's report, the honor roll?
Yes, uh, in your book, I've given you all the students in grades nine through 12. Basically, we're at 72% of our students, almost three out of every four kids. We're getting honor roll, high honor roll for the first marking period, it's basically second week of October, so this is old news, we've actually just finished our 10-week last Thursday, so we'll have new information that also include middle school, but the kids are doing quite well. And you see that, you had the students' names before you.
Thank you. Old Business, number one, adoption of the 2024-2025 school budget calendar, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the 2024-2025 budget calendar as attached. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion or explanations, same, no, no changes other than the case. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the 2024-2025 budget calendar as attached. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion or explanations, same, no changes other than this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. New business. Item one, adjustment of a tax bill resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, reduce the following tax bill due to a clerical error at the town of Wheatland. The tax bill number is 198 dot 01 dash 17 dot 3. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Item two, new business, appointment of director of physical education resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Robert Malasani as the director of physical education for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Malasani.
It is not a stay-at-home position, just letting you know, you understand that.
Yes, any discussion? I'll make further discussion. That was explained in the backup notes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number three, election inspector rates resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the election inspector rates for the 2025-2026 capital project vote on December 5th, 2023 as follows. Head election inspectors, $23 an hour, and election inspectors, $17 an hour. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
I'll have to abstain on that one.
And an abstention by Mr. Rizliki. That motion carried. Number four, under new business, textbook adoption resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the textbook committee, approve the adoption of the Just Mercy, is the title of the book written by Bryan Stevenson. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Executive session resolved at the Board of Education, adjourned to executive session at 7:33 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We will go into executive session and be back shortly. From executive session to finish off the meeting with number nine personnel, I would like a motion for number one through 13, excuse me, one through 13 as listed in the agenda. Number one, appointment of special education teacher. Number two, appointment of elementary school counselor. Number three, appointment of mentors. Number four, appointment of coach. Number five, appointment of bus driver. Number six, approval of substitute teachers. Number seven, approval of substitute bus drivers. Number eight, approval of peer tutoring students. Number nine, approval of leave of absence. Number 10, approval of leave of absence. Number 11, approval of leave of absence. Number 12, approval of school-to-work students. And number 13, approval of the newsletter stipend position. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Adjournment resolved at the Board of Education, adjourn the meeting of November 14th, 2023 at 9:32 PM.